I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So do we have, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have one addition, an add for consideration of a housing contract for Cody Piper.
Okay. And we'll, so we'll add Cody to right, right before your report, right before you, between the open, between the commissioners' reports and your reports.
Okay.
Is there any other changes to the agenda? So do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Barry, second by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes from last board meeting?
Mr. Chair, I just thought on page, page one of three, under Agenda Number One, motion second to approve the agenda with removal of any action from planning and zoning comp plan, I guess it's, it's okay if it's worded, it would probably, is for discussion only, maybe instead of...
Yeah, I think we talked about that, maybe this didn't get changed.
And then on number, page two of three, under the Dutton Lock Shelter, the change orders, did we put a dollar mount on that for the administrator? And I thought we just, I can't remember, but...
I can't remember either.
Well, if the minutes are okay, we should probably have a dollar, we should have a consensus on dollar mount on that maximum anyway.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to, or, but anything should be reasonable.
Reasonable?
Yeah.
But you do have unlimited, the way it's stated.
Oh, I'll be within reason.
Be reasonable. And that was it.
I didn't have anything.
So I just had one on page three of three, under Number One, motion and second to approve Resolution 1D. We also approved to backfill...
That's in the resolution though.
Okay.
It's within the resolution, so it's...
All right, all right. I was just, just curious, because the rest of it was listed, but the other part was not.
There's some details on those with resolutions that aren't fully described, but it's, it's fully described in the resolution, so that's, you should always reference a resolution when you're...
Okay, got it.
I mean, it could state and backfill, but if you want.
But it, yeah, it isn't that big a deal. So any other corrections or to the minutes? I'll make, entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda, is there any items in the consent agenda that we would, anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioners, open forum. I have a couple things on the open forum that will, you can bring it up, yeah, please, Nate. Yeah?
Are we going to be allowed?
I'm going to talk about that, yes. So all of you that have signed up for the open forum, that are planning on talking about the Toad Mountain project, we are going to allow time during the Toad Mountain project update time. We would ask though, that if, that if it's anything new, please bring it to us, or if it's any rebuttal of anything that somebody else says, does that make sense? We don't, if, that way we can limit the amount of people, if you're all gonna, if you're going to say the same things you've previously said in previous meetings, that's one thing we would ask. So, yes. No, that'll be, that'll be in the open forum. So who...
Just go down the list.
I'll go down the list.
If you choose not to, if you want to hold off and wait, just, just tell the chair that.
Yes, okay. So Larry Hansen.
I'll wait.
Okay. Roxanne, would you prefer to wait? Okay. Don Olson.
I'll wait.
Okay. Clark Lee, yep. Lori.
I'll wait.
Okay. David Sosman, sorry. Okay. Karen Daggett. Okay. So please come up and, yep, if you need some...
Thank you.
Karen, please state your name and your address.
My name is Karen Daggett, 679 Lake Forest Circle, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, 56501. I had no intention of going to Toad Mountain. I, right now, I should explain, I have a neurologist, hematologist, and oncologist. I'm stage four lung with CLL, so I don't have, supposedly, I was supposed to be done in September, but I'm one of Mayo's...
Way to be a fighter.
But I am one of Mayo's experiments, and so it probably will get worse for me, but right now, I'm still here. My sister is a horsewoman, she took me up to Toad Mountain because she'd been with me all day with my infusions and stuff. That's how I got up there. But I lived in Otter Tail County for almost 50 years, in Hobart Township, same, and I'm, I was totally impressed with this group up there. They didn't understand what was going on with the mountain, so I understand the reluctance. But these people actually listened. I sent them everything I gave you on the research on the mountain, but they listened to me, and they, they listened to why it was important. Why does Becker County own so much land? It's because of the three ecosystems that come together right here in the US of A, and that's all written, if you want to read it. I graduated nine kids out of Frazee Burger School, but Total Lake has never, never bailed voted in bond for the school, although their children come there. So I'm quite familiar with Total Lake people, and most, a lot of them, and my kids all went to school there, and most of theirs did too. It's a good school, my kids all went to college, said yes, we got a good education. So I'm proud of that board for voting to just try it, be a part of the plan, be a part of preserving that for the country, not just for you guys, not just for Becker County, for the country, because it's so important up there. We're looking, well Willis is looking for the government marking stick up there, it's buried, but it's up there. I think everything that you want to know about me or the mountain is in that. You'll find out how I got up there, but I am impressed that they, listen, listening is so important. Delta's dad Vernon said, Karen, God gave us two ears and one mouth, and that was for a reason. You listen twice as much as you talk. Well, it didn't work very well for me, but anyway, that's what he said. He also said, the squeaky wheel gets all the grease, and that's true too. You can be loud, but you gotta know what you're doing. So I really know more about cooking and cleaning and changing diapers and doing that kind of stuff than this. I don't know much about, although I'm a farm girl from north of Lake Park or west of Lake Park, dairy farm up there, so I know how to work. I made some mistakes in choosing a mate the first time, and the second time I dropped into a trucker on the road, so I don't know if I'm very good at that either, but we've made it over 50 years. So that's about all I have to say. If you have a question on anything I wrote, you may ask me, but I have an 11 o'clock MRI today, and so I did not want to wait, so I may have to leave early. But thank you, and I'll answer anything you want to know. I'm so medically recorded that my documents are huge at Mayo. I already died once down there, almost once the other time. Here I am, so they're, they think they can pull me through, we'll see, but I am an experiment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
Jerry Schramm.
I'll defer my time to Golden Hill.
Okay. Douglas.
I'll wait.
Okay. Willis Mattson.
I'll wait.
Larry Knutson.
I'll wait.
All right. Reports and correspondence.
I just had a couple meetings. I had Human Services, which everything, Human Services was on the agenda. We had a special meeting for EDA to go over our housing contract, which we will be discussing later on the agenda, and then I had our senior council meeting, so just a couple things about that. They do have, we were given this Cookies and Crooks, which is at Midwest Bank on October 2nd, from 10:00 to 11:30 or 2:00 to 2:30. It's a way to learn about common scams targeting consumers, so if anybody's interested, you can go to that, it's free and open to the public. And then just a couple other things that we discussed, energy assistance applications are open, and we talked about different ways that we can improve our senior day for the fair next year, and what, what we can do to hopefully get more nominations, because this year there was really a lack of nominations for Becker County Senior of the Year, so we're hoping we can get creative in that for next year. And then we also just talked about the budget cuts that Commissioner Meyer had talked about for the aging...
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Dancing Sky, yeah.
Yeah, Dancing Sky, thank you. And just how, we don't, they don't know yet how it's going to affect us locally, but they know that it likely will, especially Meals on Wheels, so just more to come on that. That was all I have.
Just one thing to add, the Dancing Sky is trying really, 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 really hard to not affect Meals on Wheels.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They have a new, they're, they're getting a new company to do it next year, and that company is going to try to keep it the same as it currently is, so we'll see how that goes.
Go ahead. I was down at the AMC conference, so Wednesday I was at MRC, Minnesota Rural Counties. Everyone goes around, introduces themselves, and explains their levy increase, and a lot of, a lot of discussion about levies. This year it seems there was a, like, three counties, well, not all the counties spoke, but three counties that were, did really well, about around that 4%, but a lot of sevens, nines, eights, and they were up to, the one county said it was, they started out at 23% and they whittled theirs down to seven, so a lot of, a lot of concerns on levies. We talked about, we did our platforms that we're going to lobby for in the fall, and when we went through that, the tribal relations came up, and I did, I did ask that, that wordage be strengthened, the, about the land transfer, and so, and then David Garing from Monoman County echoed that after I did, so there was going to be some discussion on that, there's going to be a little, I'm, I'm, I nominated, basically got nominated then to get on a committee to look at language to get, for their platform in December, and then at AMC the next day, we, well, I had some discussions with, with some, with Brian, our natural resource environment, and some other individuals at AMC, and they're going to work with MRC to find out the platform and work in, and seeing what kind of, what AMC will do with, in their platform too. So really, really some good conversations that happened there, and hopefully we can work, work together, and MRC's going to have a little bit different platform, because AMC doesn't have any platform on it, because they, there's going to be counties that are going to be more supportive towards that than, than some, but the rural counties, I think, will be a pretty, pretty significant stance on, on opposition for that land transfer, so that was, that was a real good conversations. Lots of, lots of things. Jim Joy spoke down there, and Tori Wellstrom spoke at our, at MRC, very, very good. Tori brought up something, a couple things that, that I wasn't aware of. One, one is the, with the grants to do, what's the term, I'm trying to think of the term, mine's drawing a blank, internet to the home, what's the, yeah, the broadband, he talked about the broad, thank you, Mary.
Mary, got you.
And, Mary, thank you, the IT genius over there.
Yeah.
Anyway, they talked about the broad, broadband grants that are coming through the state, and there's groups that are now trying to get, it's called digital equity, and so they're siphoning off some of the broadband money for this digital equity, which is giving people electronics that don't have access to electronics in those higher populated areas. So that was a little bit concerning, that we have people that aren't being, that are being underserved out here, and, and they're siphoning off to give money to individuals that don't have a laptop or whatever. So the other thing is that we're, we're coming up, we talked about the legacy funds that are coming up, and one of the things Tori brought, that he was disappointed in, that, that the rural septic systems aren't now eligible, or septic systems aren't eligible, wastewater systems are not eligible for legacy funds under the new proposal when voted on. So he recommended voting against that, getting that language put back in, then come back to that. I was wondering if a person could make that an amendment, because it's going to, it's going to be on our, it's going to be on the ballot, I think it's too late to change the ballot, but I, next year, if it could be an amendment to that, you'd have to vote on it again to get rural wastewater back, included back in there, because there's not much better use of legacy funds than getting, working towards rural wastewater if it's, if it's a negative. So those are some of the things at MRC. AMC, Carrie, you may want to chime in on this, I mean, add whenever, because there was a lot of good information and a lot of good, 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 good conversations that were had there, but...
Yeah, in general government too, there was a lot of discussion about the legalization of marijuana, and what different counties are doing and cities, and I think in our area, you know, with that, you know, more work will need to be done, partnering, or taking a look at what deal is done thus far. There's a lot of model ordinances out there, and what other areas have done, so that'll be coming in the future for the board to decide.
For that, for counties are different than cities though, right?
Yeah.
Because counties are required to have at least one per 12,500...
12, yes.
People?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about your cities, can a city, if the city, if the cities take all of them, then we can say, we could say no, but you know, it, it adds...
It's really communication, yeah.
It adds another dimension to us though...
Right.
That with, with the reservation within our boundaries.
It does.
So it's a little bit more difficult for us to navigate. I mean, there are so, still so many questions out there that are unanswered, it's, it's difficult to navigate.
Yes, and that's exactly what I was going to say, as the, as the discussions progressed, you know, on that topic, I think it posed a lot more questions, and that's really what a lot of the entities talked about, is that it prompts a lot more questions, so it's, it's definitely a work in progress, but it's something that our county should be watching, and then we'll have to make some decisions, you know, going forward, what we want that to look like.
We missed the topic there. Cannabis, cannabis.
Cannabis.
Yeah, cannabis, we had a, they made a presentation, and a lot of, a lot of questions yet. If you know cannabis, this, the county is required to give licenses out, according to population, Becker County with 12,500 is required to give out, let me rephrase that, within the county there has to be at least three. We're not sure if the cities count, the cities will count for that, and I think the reservation would count for that.
That's a question.
We're not sure of some of those answers yet, but there has to be at least three in Becker County, or three available in Becker County.
Right.
We can limit, we can limit those, or, but we should, we need to encourage our townships to address this.
And whether they're going to defer to the county.
I would, I would suggest that they defer, at least defer if nothing else, because if they don't defer, then someone can come into them and get a, and get one, and they, if they don't, if they do nothing, they will get one, and nothing, they, they can't stop it at that point, so, at this time. So, I mean, those, those things, we have to follow that and guide our townships to that. The other thing I found interesting in our, my committee meeting of natural resources was that the DNR is going to do a public waters update, and this will take eight years, because they're going to do, they can only do a percentage, so if there's public waters that you think shouldn't be, which there's probably not a lot of them, that should be taken off the public waters list, you can address it then, but there will be looking at adding public waters. If you remember, there was a big fight over land that was not listed as public waters, but the DNR came in and said, this is public waters. It was a, a farm field, I think, there was a drainage going through it, so now they're, the fight, the thing was, it's not on your public waters map, while there's, they stated that, and they, and I guess that there was a judge that ruled in their favor, that just because it's not on the map doesn't mean it's not a public water, so they're going to go through every county and update that list over the next eight years. They also, pollution control was there, and they talked about in the flood, flood plains, they're going to look at requiring injection of manure into the soils rather than spreading it and working it in, so there are some, I would imagine there's concerns over there, if a farmer's not ready for liquid and has dry, it would be, it would be kind of a difficult transition. I think that's it for AMC. The other one was, oh, we, then I had finance, finance, everything, I think we're on the agenda. We did go through the, are you going to talk about the audit? Did you have that on your list?
I didn't, but I can.
We just, we were presented with our audit, and it was a good audit. They, they said that the staff worked well and provide all information, and came out very, anything on that that you want to highlight, or?
I don't.
I don't think so, everything was, everything they said was pretty much favorable. There are a couple little things, but they weren't...
Could be modified.
Modified, but nothing, nothing bad, serious.
Okay.
Not doing right, so. Actually, they complimented several times and think the thing's the right way, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did have some questions about more of a pair at the state level, but we didn't have the answers for those, or they didn't, for, that was a state, state issue, so.
Yeah.
Dave, you can touch base on sheriffs, being as I was, do a tele, telecommunications scan and not...
Yeah, and on the phone. So I had a, Barry and I had a sheriff's meeting. We talked about how we could increase the number of housing of federal prisoners if we could hire a full-time jailer, another full-time jailer, which would be a budget-neutral item, because we also have items in the budget that would be decreased by having a full-time jailer, for example, overtime and part-time usage of staff. And then also by adding the jailer, we can guarantee, we could make, not necessarily guarantee, but we could state to the federal people that we can house more prisoners, which would increase our revenue by housing those prisoners, and then by saying that we can house more prisoners, say, hey, we can house 20, 20 prisoners instead of 10 or, or whatever we were at. We can, then, then we can possibly get a good increase in the amount of money we get paid per prisoner per day. So that would be a positive thing for our sheriffs, our budget and our jail and everything else. So Paula and Chris are going to look at what they can do, and then the other option, the other thing we also talked about was if we were to add another deputy, then we could, we could tell the federal government, we can transport prisoners to Fargo to go to court, so we could, we could, if we can say that we can do that, then they would possibly increase the amount per prisoner per day even more to, to, so that would be another increase in revenue, which would also be able to be a rev, a budget-neutral item to pay for that deputy also, or maybe, or maybe an increase, a budget increase for revenue. So Paula and Chris, we're going to talk to them about that, what number can you come up with for paying us for federal prisoners if we can guarantee those two, two separate things? So that's a, that's kind of the main part of what we talked about, and then we also talked about budget items also too, in that sheriff's meeting, which are, which we have already gone through, so. Anything else on, on the phone era?
We anticipate a, a pay increase on our...
Yes, we anticipate a pay increase anyway, yeah. We're going to request one no matter what, so.
I do have a flyer, did anyone want to look at the flyer for the, the public waters inventory update? Nate, did you want to take a look at it? It's just a sheet from state, I can give it to you in a second, but...
And then I also had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting. One of the big things that happened to them in the past month and a half is they got a cyber attack through email. So what happened was, is one of the executive director's employees that does, does the, is in charge of like the billing and the financing and so forth, anyway, they're, they're using a new facility in Alexandria, and they're putting money into it, they're remodeling things and doing things and so forth, so there's a lot of emails back and forth about, hey, I need approval for this amount or this amount. So what happened was, is that person's email got hacked, and then the, the AI technology monitored the email, and for correspondence back and forth, so when, then they found out, oh, there's money being, going to be approved, so then they sent an email to the executive director to, the AI did, from this person, and to approve this, to approve an amount to be spent, and it was written where, like, it was a legitimate email, like, they even used the nickname of the person when he called them, they used their nickname, so the AI tracked it for probably 30 days or 20 some days, and then sent the email out, and of course, and then they did it, and it happened twice. So there's two payments of around 40 some thousand, so $96,000 got, got taken, so, yeah. So they do have insurance, obviously, so that, that's going to help, but there's been a long process of, of what was, what was, how it happened, when it happened, where it happened, and how they can prevent it and so forth, so. But it was, it was really, it was, he said it was the weirdest thing ever, because everything was legitimate, it wasn't one of those, it was a phishing one, but it wasn't those normal phishing ones where you can tell. He really, so, yeah, that was a, they did, they don't believe anything else happened, and they also have multi-factor authentication in their email too, so, but still...
What agency was that?
The Lakes Country Service Co-op, yeah.
Mary, keep your eyes open.
Yeah. Also, in the Lakes Country Service Co-op, the, the national conference is December 4th through the, to the 6th, and our executive director is currently the president of the national organization, so we have some board members that are going to that conference. And then coming up here in September, I believe September 19th is the date, I think, or maybe it's a little, it is the date they have to know, but there are four, going to be four board members up for reelection, three of them are running again and one is not, so there'll be, if anybody, you guys are interested in being on Lakes Country Service Co-op, I don't know, you know, jumping to it, so. So anyway, but it'll be sent out to all, the ballots will be, the, the requests for nominees will be sent to all the organizations that, they were like, they were last year when, when I was elected to it, so, if anybody's interested. I also had a recreation advisory committee meeting. Amy Sterns from Project 412 presented just a little bit of information about their organization quick, and about the, the main part of it was talking about the trolls. So she had some cell phone data, no, I, this is, this was not, this was kind of weird to me, scared, a little scary to me. They are, they are able to track cell phone data anywhere, so if your cell phone is on, they know who you are, where you are, and what you're doing.
Who's "they"?
Those people. I don't know. Yeah, that's why I said "they." So, so, and they can narrow it down to like a certain area, so within like a, like 100 feet of one of the trolls, they can tell how many peoples, what people, what cell phones went there, how long they stayed, and their name and their address and, you know, it's, it's, so it's kind of scary, but I guess if the data's used for good stuff, I don't know. But anyway, at the Dutton Locks Troll, there's been 14,300 cell phones that have visited that troll since June 1st.
Oh, I left mine in my car, so add one.
Add one, yeah. So they, and, and it's, it's amazing how, wow, and then in the city of Detroit Lakes in the park, there was 45,500 people that visited that one, and then at Wantigan Park, there's been 19,800, and then there's a couple more trolls that, that are around too, that aren't, that haven't been visited quite as much, but that to me was amazing and also scary, that, I, it's like I almost wanted to not use my cellphone anymore, but I did. So anyway, what?
I wanted to know that, that expenses that was paid for the Detroit Lakes tourism...
Yes.
And it was also half paid for by the city of Detroit Lakes.
Yes.
Also to help for all types of recreation, hotel use, wherever, see where these people are coming from, so it's, I really got exposed on what the troll, but it's for all kinds of terms and different...
Yeah, and, and that was my next, thank you, Ron. Yep, and, and that was my next, thank you, Ron, that was my next comment that was paid.
We got an extra chair, Ron.
You could just put your name.
But if somebody else wants to join in and half a pay for that service, we could serve it.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna do. So the, the next thing I.
Chair's, chair offer is a revolt.
Yeah. The next thing that was on, on our agenda was Dutton Lock Shelter. So they're, they wanna get the slab poured by this fall, and they're hoping to have it, the construction done by April 15th, or having it constructed April 15th, and then the cleanup and the finish up should be done by June, hopefully done by June 1st of next year, so it'll be ready to use and, and ready to go. So that's pretty exciting. That's been a, that's been kind of a long process also too, so. And then also Wantigan Park, on, I think it's, I believe the road is North River Drive, the gravel road that goes into Wantigan Park. The, the county donated the equipment and the, and the, and the labor and the city of Detroit Lakes and the Wantigan Park, but the, whoever, who owns Wantigan Park, Frazee Economic? Yeah, developed, they, they paid for all the product and everything, and they sprayed the, they, they grade, they graded and sprayed the road for dust, so it's, it was, there's a lot of problems with people driving in and out, dust everywhere and so forth, so it worked out pretty good, I guess. And the last thing we talked about was Heartland Trail. They're gonna begin work on the trail from the bridge to Frazee, and then they're gonna connect it to Wantigan Park, so that should be going, getting going pretty soon, hopefully. I mean, the, all, the, all, everything's there, everything's ready to go, the plans are done, the grants are ready to go, and so that should be ready to work. And then they all, we also looked at, the, with the Heartland Trail is also going to probably use the plan that was created a few years ago, but by going through Bucks Mills, through Cormorant, through, between Cormorant, between middle Cormorant and Big Cormorant, the road there, up to, up to Highway 10, up to, up to Lake Park, and then north, north Lake Park, it'll meet up with, north and west Lake Park, it'll meet up with Clay County. That's the proposal right now. So we'll see, we'll see. That's kind of exciting. It's a, it's, it, all those things are a long process, and it gets kinda frustrating sometimes, and, but it's, hopefully it's a, it's, it's gonna start moving along. And then I guess the last thing, at O Sage Beach, the DNR is going to attempt to remove the concrete. So hopefully they can get it out of there so we don't have to, it's, or, or at very minimum, they're going to grind some of it off and cut the rebar off and, and smooth it out, that, that's, if they can't get it out. And that's, that's all I have, Richard, did you?
I had highway with John. We didn't have much there. We did get a new mastic pla, patch trailer, so it's used, we got it used from the DOT, Minnesota DOT, at a fraction of the cost, and this thing has got a heater on it, and you just put a chunk of material in there, and it turns it to liquid, you pour it in the hole, and half hour later, you're ready to drive on it. So that'll, that'll help with some of your potholes. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chair, the, one other thing to add, so NRM was authorized to purchase a snowmobile, but we were just told yesterday that they, they, they bought, they bought the one from the sheriff's department that they, so that would work fine, so at a fraction of the cost. So thanks Sheriff Glander for reaching out to NRM and, and.
I think they were, imagine about being overcharged or something.
Yeah, it was 20, $2,400, I think, with the snowmobile, but very, you know, so it's nice to know our, our department heads are looking at, at saving and, and saving money when they can, so. One other thing, for those that are interested, probably not many of you, but my daughter is playing volleyball, she's a setter at Lake Bargatia, and she's gonna be recognized for 1,000th career assist tonight, so she's, she's pretty, pretty proud of her and my other, all of my children, of course, just like all the fathers out here.
Is there any other reports, anybody? Appointments, is there any appointments today? All right, so let's move on to, is Cody in here?
No, Cody's not in here.
We can come back to him.
Wanna come back to him?
Yeah, so let's just, let's go, we'll, we'll just come back to Cody.
Okay.
Let's go with, that's Cody? Cody?
There's Cody.
You are up and ready to go.
Is this for the contract?
Yeah.
Yes, this came as in addition to the agenda items, so thank you for taking that. But yeah, I guess I don't know how much you want me to go through this. It's been brought to the board in prior years, and all four of you have seen this contract and are familiar with it, so I can.
For those in attendance, just tell what it is and the, and the amount, the amount in the.
Summarize it. So the Becker County EDA, HRA has contracted out their housing administration, management of the programs, the maintenance, everything in prior years. So this is exercising an option on a contract renewal. In 2023, we had an expiration of a long-term contract that was five years. During that process, we went out for an RFP to kind of vet our services and availability. Of course, the termination of that contract and then developing a new one, there was some significant on, cost increases that came with that. So we've been working pretty diligently with our management partner, looking at the operational costs, the funding resources, and the possibilities for us to continue that working relationship. But this year, they proposed a 4% increase, we got that reduced to 2.5%. So we'd be looking at a one-year term recommendation for a contract fee of 220,888, slightly up from the prior year. And this is, again, I, I included the memorandum there to, to support all the public housing properties, our voucher program, our market rate rentals, miscellaneous properties, and our state-funded loan programs. So what we'd be asking for is the board to approve, as recommended, the management service contract between Becker County EDA, Becker County, and MM CDC for the amount of 220,888 for one year, beginning January 1st of 2025. And that would be executed by, in, the same as prior contracts, the county administrator and myself, and our management partner.
And this is just for a one-year contract?
Correct.
You know, we've had, we've had lots of conversations about, we recognize that this, this contract price is getting hefty, and what, what can we do to, you know, it, is it in our best interest to continue, or, you know, bring it back in-house, and we're just, this is where we came, came to this year, is that we'll, we'll do one more contract and, and continue to, to explore that option.
Yeah, it's very complicated, and we'd have to hire people to, to do this work. We don't have people to do it, and there's a lot to it.
Yeah, it's federally funded properties, so there's a lot of reporting that goes with it, timelines, budgeting that have to be submitted, that's how they get the reimbursement for those funds. They don't give you more than you need, so it's always almost like a prove it situation. So there is a lot of program administration involved in this. And as mentioned, yeah, it would require staffing, and that's why we contract with them. And right now, we, we feel that in cooperation with them, I think that's a testament to our relationship that we have with them, being able to work on the contract prices and be flexible and look at all options. I think that's, that's why we're going with the one-year contract, just to make sure that we're, we're covering all avenues and, and making the right resources available.
As we, as we move forward, I would like to, when we revisit this, I think I certainly would look at the city or, you know, see if there's a relationship with the city that's doing service, similar services, if there's a partnership available there when we visit this.
Yeah, we've communicated with other agencies, and part of going out for an RFP in 2023 was, or for 2023 was, was to vet resources available. As we found out, there's not a lot of people that do this, it's a kind of a niche type of scope of work, and it's, it's best suited for public entities and nonprofit service providers like themselves. So this is just continuation of the prior year contract, no services were identified to be changed. It's just a slight increase to cover, cover the cost of their increases to staffing and, and benefits and wages and stuff, so.
Any other questions?
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with MM CDC.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, thanks Cody. Carrie?
Thank you, mister, I was gonna call you Mr. Chair. Yes, you are today. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new human resource director, and I have to tell you, I'm very excited to bring her on board.
I bet you are.
I'm really excited not to have to do two jobs. So I told her she could introduce herself and share what she would like to share with you.
Good morning.
Morning.
So my name is Tiara Kristen, I've met some of you guys, but not all of you yet. Born and raised in Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, graduated from Frazee. I have an associate's degree in human resource management, my bachelor's in business admin with an emphasis in management, and then my master's in human resource management as well, and senior certification in human resources as well. And just right around eight years of experience in HR. I am very excited to be with the county and very excited to work with all of you. My husband and I still live in Detroit Lakes, and we have two little boys, one and three, and yeah, that's about all I have.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Her second week on the job, yes.
I, I, I said to her last week, I said, thank you for choosing Becker County, she says, well, thank you for choosing me.
Absolutely, I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't have a lot to report out on, and I'm probably just going to go right to the budget, and I'm gonna ask Mary and Nicole to come up front. Most of my time for the last several weeks has been dedicated to really reviewing the budget items with department heads and, and finance. So as of yesterday, first of all, is there any questions or discussion that you would like to have with regards to the budget?
I don't have anything.
No.
Nothing, okay. I assumed that was a no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So initially in the packet, there was the worksheets that indicated, looking at setting the preliminary at above the 8% mark. And yesterday during our finance committee, we were able to find some cost savings, so we were able to, and I do have a modified resolution that will reflect the budget information that you have as well. We just redid that late yesterday into today. So at this point, we're with the expenses, and, and I should note, and we've discussed this before, the majority of the increases are with regards to increase in implementation of our, our salary grid and getting our, a lot of our positions up to a marketable place, and that was the, the goal of, of this board. So at this point, where I would ask the board to consider setting the preliminary levy with the caveat in there that I think as a county, we should still continue to look for budget savings, and that'll be a work in progress. But at this point, it, it preliminary levy with all of the costs and, and the work that's been done on the budget is at 7.5%.
Mr. Chair, well, at finance yesterday, I did ask Denise and, and thank Denise for her very honest answer. I was trying to whittle some money out of Denise's budget, and she informed me that she had, she'd, she'd done that, and so thank, thank you for your, but I think, I think we all go back and, and look at committees and.
Yes.
And see if there's any cost savings. We talked to the highway yesterday, and, and I think when, when John comes back, we can revisit, revisit that. He did get some more revenues that he, he had an incorrect number, which made us very happy for about a minute. And then it, then we realized that the percentage that he was talking was not correct, so thanks for that minute of hope, Jim, but, you know, there's, there's not a lot of room. I mean, we would have to be pretty creative if we wanna reduce this anymore, I mean significantly. We can, one op, one thing I asked if was possible is look at this, the sales tax money to pay part of the, the building bond, and that's an option that we could do to reduce levy. As, as you know, the, the sales tax money is at, when we did that initially, was 44% out-of-county money, so that would, that would help reduce our taxpayers. Portion of this that is allowable, it's something that, if we, if it was thought needed to, we could talk to Jim. Jim didn't think too highly of that, he had his construction costs for the roads and, and bridges, and, so that, but that's something that we could look at if, if we wanted to lower this anymore.
Yes.
But right now, I think we need, I think this is a number we should set as our preliminary and, and look at.
Look at.
If we wanna look at that option, we can.
Yep.
But if we do that, we're gonna lose on roads and bridges, so.
Well, the, the thing we have to look at is where that sales tax money is. The concern I have is that, that it's not gonna go up right now. I don't think we're in a time of excess spending. I think we're in a time of, our, our taxpayers are, so I don't think that dollar amount is gonna go up like it has been. If it was gonna continue to rise, I think this would be a, a good option, but I'm a little concerned about that option.
Yep. Is there any other discussion on the proposed preliminary levy? So I'll entertain a motion. We have the current resolution in the, here, not on the packet.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve 09242B, the proposed tax levy at 7.5%.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Carrie?
Thank you. And then I also would like a motion or a recommendation for a motion for the, for the resolution 2C with regards to the tax levy as well as for the EDA.
Do I have a?
I'm sorry, it was included in your packet.
Yes, it is, it's in the, it's, it's Resolution 2C. Do we have, do I have an motion to approve Resolution 2C?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2C.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion?
I'm just trying to find out what.
It's.
What that increase was, just to let the folks out here know.
Yeah, I was looking for it here. It's 0.185%, but I don't remember the dollar.
Oh, yeah.
Are you asking about the EDA?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was 2.5.
2.5%?
From, on the levy. 2.5% from last year?
That was increased to the, the MRCC.
The contract.
No, I'm trying to figure out the dollar amount for the.
The levy increase.
Levy increase.
Not the.
The EDA levy increase.
Did he have that on his sheet?
I think it says here, amount of 245,000.
Yeah, but, but I can't, where is it at?
I'm looking on the screen.
Is it on that?
Right, they want the rate, they want the tax rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have.
Oh, 245, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have that number.
Anyway, I just wanted to make note of that.
Yeah.
So, but I'll make a, I think we have a motion in a second. Who, who's second?
Who's second?
Richard.
Richard. Yeah, I think I did. Okay, all in favor of 2C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, just the last thing I just wanted to note, and I'll remind as well at the next board meeting, but October 1st, we, our county is hosting the joint governance meeting prior to our board meeting on 7, so I just wanted to let you all know, you need to get here early for that, so that's all I have.
Where are we hosting it at, upstairs?
I think it would probably be best if we hosted upstairs, so that we're not kinda scrambling to get ready for our board meeting.
Okay.
If it's available.
Yeah.
Or third floor, we'll find a different alternate spot.
Is it, anything else, Carrie?
No, that is it.
All right, Mary, you, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just found the document that we were looking for. The countywide levy increase from EDA went up from 160 to 245.
Okay.
That included Cody's full, in the past, we were, we were deficit spending, I believe.
That included Cody's full, in the past, we were, we were deficit spending, I believe.
We were deficit spending before.
In EDA.
Yes.
But it did significantly go up.
Yep. Mary, you are the next contestant.
Okay, the first item we have is the license list. We have three annual tobacco license renewals.
I, I know we've asked this before, but can we do all three of these at once, or do we do them separate?
No, we could do them all at once.
Okay.
By type. Yep.
Can I entertain a motion to approve the tobacco license renewals?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie?
Then we have a seasonal tobacco license.
I'll entertain a motion to approve a seasonal tobacco license.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The gambling resolutions were both on consent agenda. The only other item we have is the combination on-off sale liquor license for a new owner. This was formerly Curly's. It's the Fishbowl, Kerry Friesen, and Erie Township.
I heard that sold, but Fishbowl, that's a new name.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the new owners of the combination on-off liquor license for the Fishbowl, formerly of Curly's.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carrie?
Best of luck to them.
Yes.
The next item I have is, the state sent us a letter in August asking for us to open a new driver and vehicle service office in Ogama, Minnesota. They gave us three options. The county board can appoint the auditor. The county board can appoint the deputy registrar, director of the license bureau, or the county board may decline to designate a deputy registrar for the new location. We did contact the individuals who had originally contacted us, asking for more information as to the location, so that we could do an estimate of costs for rent and utilities. They basically told us we cannot, they will not disclose the location until we agree to open this new office. This is not going to be cost-effective for Becker County. Currently, we have five staff, three full, full-time, two part-time. The amount of time and equipment that it would take, it takes six months to get certified. I think that's why they're reaching out to us. If the board declines, they will then offer it to the city of Ogama, and if they decline, then I believe they will open it up to the public for a private. But this is a state request. They will not disclose to us who is asking.
It's not a state request. It's someone requested the state.
Right.
We anticipate, and so the state is asking us to either do it, or, because we have first right of refusal, basically.
Right, right.
So, if we choose not to do it, and the city chooses not to do it in Ogama, then it'll go out to bids for private or other agencies, maybe, or whatever that is.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, I think we do a little bit more homework. I think we can do a little bit of a cost estimate. We do have it till, October 1st is our next meeting. It's within the 60 days, so
Yep.
I say we, we look into it a little bit more, and
Maybe, maybe continue to ask those questions.
See
We can get some answers.
Well, I can tell you, we did a cost analysis. For one part-time and one full-time staff, it'd be $100,000. Currently, at the office that we're running, our net revenue is $100,000 a year. But, yeah, if you want me to get some more information, I can certainly do that.
Touch base with Carrie, and I think we can wait, we'll wait to just our next meeting to make the decision.
Yeah.
We have the time.
Okay.
Certainly, if we can find out any more information from the state on it, then we can
Okay.
I, I think that would be prudent. There's no sense to rush either way on this.
Nope.
We have this, and we'll find out if 60 days is the official
Right, deadline.
Deadline.
Is what they were stating. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Judy. She's here.
And for those that don't know, Judy is our IT specialist. She has protected the county, and I, and everyone should take this into your personal accounts, too. There is more attempts at hacking today than ever, and it's, and it's expedited by how many times, Judy? 100? Since two years ago?
Oh, I think it's even more than that. I really, I, I don't have that stat in my head, but I think it's easily well over 100 times.
Yeah, so protect your personal data. I mean, use the multi
Factor authentication.
Factor, you know, because they're, everyone has their own, at their own bank accounts. I mean, this is, I mean, it's getting, it's getting worse every day. So, don't believe anything is, voices can be duplicated, emails can be duplicated, texting. Yeah, text, everything is. Just, you be suspect to everything. Nothing is true anymore.
Well, except for what I'm gonna tell you right now.
Okay. Wait, you're not a hologramer.
No, no, I'm not. Well, maybe. Good morning, commissioners. What I'm bringing forward today is our Office 365 maintenance renewal for 2024, the rest of '24, '25, and '26. It's, the reason I brought it to the board, instead of just having it in the regular packets, is it went up. It went up. It went up about 14%, which is within the norm. But again, I wanted to let you know that we're, we are going from about $80,000 to about $100,000. It's really about $85,000 to $100,000. We added about 10, we, we added exactly 10 users this year, and so that increased it a little bit more. But what significantly went up, if you look at your packet, it's actually our Office 365 plan, from the government, the government plan, it went up from $20 per month to, per, in, per license to $25.30, so $5.30. Couple went down, but that's really the significant change. That went from about $76,000 to $97,000 in the same time period. So, I, I'm recommending that we purchase this. Again, we don't have a, a lot of choices. This gives us email, it gives us Office 36, it's Office 365, so it gives us email. It gives us all the Microsoft products that we use, which is Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint. In IT, we use something called Visio, but we buy that one, for one individual, because we don't need it for everybody. Are there any questions on this?
You had said this is for '25 and '26?
Yeah, it's a three-year thing.
It's
But it's this much every year?
It's gonna, well, it's gonna be $100,000 this year, because we got a special discount. $100,000, it'll change. It'll go to $105,000 in '25 and '26. Any other questions?
And again, this is for use of, of the software on the computers of Office 365.
Yes.
And we have
320.
320.
And our email also.
Mm-hmm. And we have a few emails that are not that way. There are a few people that don't need the full Office suite, so we do break those out, because those are considerably cheaper. Any other questions?
After this, after this vote, I have a question for you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the three-year contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica. All in favor? Say, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
One thing in finance, that even the auditor said that the IT, they talked specifically about IT and the risk of IT, our auditing firm did. So, you can tell how serious this is. And Judy, tell them what, tell us what, again, you're, you added into your budget for next year to do a
What's called a penetration test. A penetration test, you hire a company to try to break in. What it helps you identify is the possibility of where that might happen. We feel very secure. We think we will do very well with our penetration tests, because we do some, some, not from an outside service, we do some internal penetration tests, I would call it. But I think we're, we're pretty secure, but we want to certainly start doing that on a yearly basis. And again, it's like all of IT, it's expensive. So, we budgeted for it. And then the next thing we're gonna budget for is, again, something else that's security-related that we'll talk about for 2025. But again, it's a considerably, you know, it's, it's $10,000, $12,000 to do this kind of thing. And so, we want to do it as we need it. We don't need it tomorrow. So, we'll be doing that probably, my, my hope is we'll be doing that in the first quarter of 2025.
But it shows the significance when your audit firms are, are, there's, was there a new area for that in their, in their auditing of cybersecurity?
Yeah, they expanded that.
So
At least for us.
It's certainly significant. And that company that you are hiring is, what, a couple 12-year-olds' kids that
Yeah, yeah. It might be your daughter, I think, you know?
I think it's important to note that while it's expensive
Yes.
The consequences
Of not doing
Could be dire.
Yes.
You know, if, if we wouldn't do it and we would get hacked, we could
Absolutely.
We could be talking potentially millions.
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's just important to be proactive.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy. Sheriff Glanor?
Good morning, members of the board. I have, in front of you are 2025 squad order. I am requesting three Chevy Tahos from North Country GM, and two Ford police vehicles. The two Ford are from 1040 out of St. Cloud. The total cost is $248,587.72. The cost per vehicle is up slightly, but it's less than what we had predicted and proposed in our budget. So, that's a good thing. The reason we split it up, three and two, is because of history with the companies. They'll either quit making the vehicles mid-season, or they hold off on for a period of time. So, we have had issues in the past getting our vehicles on time, or even getting them until the following year. So, this way, we, we can hopefully get three, or two, or, or hopefully five. The reason you got the Chevy today is because we found out last Friday that they both have a, a short timeline, a short window for ordering, and they would have closed before the next board meeting.
And these are all budgeted?
They are.
They're in your budget?
And they're, they're currently under budget for this.
Yes.
I'll then train a motion to approve the purchase of the five squads.
I'll make a motion to
Second.
Purchase.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
You gotta cue us a little better here.
Okay. I'll cue you better. That, that's all you have.
That's all you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Todd.
Steve, is Steve here? So, so before you start, Steve, we, go ahead. Just to tell everybody, we, we are giving you an opportunity to make, have comments. Please, you know, raise your hand, come up if you need to make, if would like to make comment. We, we would ask, though, that, that if it's not anything that hasn't already been presented to the board, that if it's something new, yes, we would like to hear it. If it's, and if you would like to rebut something that from, that somebody said from the other side of the issue, then, then yes, please, please do that, too. But otherwise, let's try to keep it as concise and short as possible. That's, so. Go ahead, Steve.
Sure. In previous board meetings, we had presented requests to enter into proposal with SRF, and that got tabled, moved forward into the future. And during that timeframe, at the last board meeting, there was also a question about how much money our Parks and Rec Fund has in it, and if we were to spend out some of our funds for the Dump Locks project and other projects, where we'd be sitting. So, I put together informational, information for the board on the current Parks and Rec Fund balance, and, and what would happen to it if we took out for the Shelter project, and then also for, to enter into a contract with SRF, and what would be the resulting fund balance after that. It'd be right around that $175,000, if, considering that we're able to take in enough money during the year to meet our annual revenue, our revenues to meet our annual operating expenses. So, this is just a net, most of our fund balance has been spent out in the last number of years in special projects or, or different things.
Speaking to the mic, where I can hear you.
Okay. So, the estimated fund balance in a couple of years would be right around $175,000. Also, last Monday night, there was a town board meeting, and Commissioner Jepson and County Administrator Carrie Smith attended that meeting, and they were gonna give an update on what they found out at that meeting. So, I'm not sure if, how you want to do that. You want to take their report first?
Do we want to start with the, do we, do we want to start with getting input?
Well, let's, let's hear, let's, can we start with what you guys found out, and then if there's any additions or responses to that?
Yep. So, so what was, talked about at the last board meeting was potentially looking at doing just the mountainside, not, not purchasing the, the beach, and having minimal development, and, and kind of preserving the, the mountain, bringing it back to its natural state. There was a lot of discussion at, at the town board meeting on, on Monday. You know, there's, there's concerns about the cost of it. There's concerns about cost, meaning the price, which we don't know, which was another concern. A lot of just unknown the, the dollar amounts. We heard from Larry Hansen, who, who is confident that there are grants to bring the mountain back to its natural state. But we do have, we would still need to purchase the, the mountain. The board did agree that they would be in support of bringing the, the mountain back to its natural state with very minimal development, but they would want to be involved in the process. Another, you know, they would want to be involved in the RFP process, sending another RFP out, and really being involved to make sure that that's all that happens, that we don't have, you know, a massive development on the mountain. I, I would say that it was approved, but with apprehension. Is that fair to say, Randy, Randy and Jim, that, you know, there, there's still a lot of worry about the cost of it, what the cost of it is to taxpayers, what the cost is gonna be to the county. I did mention at the meeting that we, we are concerned about our balance, and, and whether or not we could move forward based off of the balance in our rec fund, which is, you know, due to the Dump Locks increase. Anything else, Carrie, that I'm missing?
I, I'm listening, but I can't think of anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's about it. We'll, we'll hear from, from those that are here, if I missed anything.
Sure.
They wanted to be a part of the, of the planning process.
Yep.
And I don't blame them one bit.
Yep.
Because the plan around them is gonna affect. And I have to leave for a test scan, and I want to give you this, each of you can hand it out. That happened in my backyard in the media shower. And then I'm gonna leave everything. They've got all the papers I wrote, and you have all the papers I wrote, and I'm not going into all that, but I am gonna go get into it tomorrow.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. Just to, maybe to note on this, after we were at the township, I did have some further conversations with Steve, and you can touch on this as well, Steve, if you would like. But with the RFP that was sent out, there really wasn't information put in there about what the plan would be. So, or what, you were really asking them to come up with potential plans
Sure.
For that. And I know there was some discussion at the township that they would like to be a part of a, a future RFP if that were to be needed.
Mm-hmm.
But the RFP that had been written was fairly generic. So, Steve and I did have that conversation, you know, if this were to move forward, you know, it appears that that could be perhaps modified through public comment, et cetera, because it was written generically enough that any and all options could be on the table.
Absolutely.
Steve, I got a question.
Sure.
So, when you, because you were talking about what was in that fund. So, is there money in the fund now to purchase this?
So, with, what would happen is if the county decided to move forward, you, first of all, you have to have a master plan. you have to have a master plan. And what a master plan involves is develop is a process to figure out what you want done with it. When you submit a request to the Minnesota Greater Parks and Trails Commission, you have to have a master plan that says what you're going to do. Based on that, they'll approve, they'll rank your project, and then they approve the funding. That's what the hope is. So then, based on what the way the plan is rolled out, so so let's say you go through this process and you decide, well, we're just going to have hiking trails. On that, that can be a plan. Whatever that plan is and what your development costs and operating costs are that would go into that and how that would impact the region is all in that master plan. And so then you bring that to them and you say, this is what our plan is to do is they they're going to rank that. If they recommend funding it, they'll they'll help fund it, but then you have to do what you say you're going to do.
Yeah.
So that's what a master plan is. It's a generic process. You're not we're not going into this saying, this is what we're going to do. It's taking public input and developing a plan on what you want to do with it. It's going to be presented to the.
The one thing, the one thing, oh, sorry, Richard.
But there was so there, and I want to just be clear on this because and let it so everybody else is clear that so. So there's the cost for the master plan, and then there was some interest cost that we thought we were going to be around $300,000.
Sure, and so.
That's what I'm asking you, to pay for the plan and the interest to if everything went right, do we have that money?
It would it would be close. You know, it would be the carrying cost from the time the Trust for Public Land took ownership. They would have to do some things on their end. So there's a time between you got a time you got notice that you're awarded this funding and the time you actually take ownership. What the Trust for Public Land wants the county to cover the interest cost on that, and it'd be eight months.
I think it's more accurate to say it depends on how long it takes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the sale price, because we don't know what the sale price would be at this time
if we're only going to do the mountainside.
That's true. There's some unknowns out there.
I do want to just make sure that everybody here understands it correctly, and I'm understanding it correctly. Part of the the master plan was to do a needs assessment of the community, to figure out what it is that we need in in Becker County. If that through that master planning is determined that we need camping. What would that mean for Toad Mountain? Like, what would that? Let me back up. What would that mean as far as our scoring for the the regional park status? Knowing, I mean, and I'm asking this because we know what what the the town board wants, and my concern is that if we do this master plan and we do this needs assessment and the needs assessment shows that, you know, Becker County, you need you need camping, and in order for you to score high enough, you're going to have to have, not that they're going to say that, but that's.
Sure.
What I'm saying.
No, no, I understand.
Is that is that accurate?
The you would have to, if you did a survey and you determined that camping was one of the key components that's needed in this area, depending on what type of camping it is, looking at those different things, you'd have to explain why you're not including it in there. Does that mean it'll score low? I don't believe so. I haven't been through the process, but I think you there's certain things that they look at that they they'll take into consideration, you know, if you have Lake Shore, if you have redevelopment, you know, let's say you reconstruct it, that might give you some extra points. That that would be a conversation, though, that we would probably want to have with their staff maybe before you get into this. So you can better understand the the process that they go through, the commission does in in their scoring process. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's as best as I can give you right now.
Best you can, yep.
So really, through the plan, whatever the planning process becomes, then depending on what that looks like, that'll determine what potential grants it's eligible for.
Yes, in in part. So when you're looking for grants, the grants themselves have parameters.
Right.
So, for example, if you're looking through Minnesota Greater Parks and Trails Commission, they would have some requirements that you have to meet. That's that's geared towards more non-motorized, and we were looking at some federal funding that was even more so. So you're going to restrict the use of this going into the future and what you can develop it with. So let's say, for example, you getting back to Commissioner Jepson's question about the the camping, and let's say that you see an extreme out there where somebody says they want a full-blown campground, RV campground, and but the parameters of those grants would not allow that. So you would have to get into this planning pro when you go through the planning process, you'd be working with TPL and you're probably reaching out to those people that offer those grants to make sure that we're not going down a path that's not that's not conforming to begin with.
Yeah, I guess I asked the question just to make the distinction between development versus restoration.
Sure.
That would probably look very different.
It could, and you could actually incorporate those together at the same time.
Depending on what you.
Depending on what you do, correct.
Randy, could you could you come up and?
I don't necessarily need to come up, but I do have a question to kind of address. Does this require a new RFP specifically directed towards a minimal impact project?
The question is, is we'd have to develop a new RFP. The RFP is a generic RFP. It's you need a firm to complete the master planning process so that in that master planning process, you identify all the different things that the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails want you to address. If when you go through the planning process, you can identify the things upfront that you want to put as limitations, that doesn't necessarily mean that you you'd put that in the RFP itself. I don't think you would, because RFP is to hire a firm to develop a plan. It's not to develop what type of plan. That's going to be drawn out through the public process that we talked about.
Yeah, and to your question, Randy, when we were out at the Township Board, we talked about that. And when I came back here, I looked at the RFP. It's written very generically. So really, the initial plans that people were seeing was really, if you will, somebody's potential, what they were thinking, but nothing, nothing's been decided. So it may make more sense if this project were to go forward with the RFP. We already have that in place. There's been some, but that it can take a turn completely left from what was already presented.
So you would keep the recreational plan as it was on the table at that point?
I don't I don't know that we'd necessarily keep because we're we're hearing from the public that they would like to see changes and modifications in that. So rather than going through the whole entire RFP, because really what you're asking for is somebody to come on board to assist in looking at what the potential and all the plans that potentially could be. So I I think with what we have, it's written generically enough that we could scratch that plan if so be and look at something different. Is that me?
Larry.
An RFP, when you request an RFP, you put down the parameters of what you wanted on that RFP. That's how they determine a cost. If you change that and you don't give the other people that put in for that RFP a chance, that's like doing a bid and then taking half the stuff off and saying, well, you can still have the bid. I would be very unhappy if I was bidding on something and you changed all the parameters of that bid process and you didn't give me that opportunity.
If you don't mind, I think there's a misunderstanding of what the RFP process is. The RFP is to hire a firm to help develop a plan for that for that project. It's not laying out what you want it to do and then hiring someone to develop a plan for that. It's the other way around. You're going to hire a firm to develop a plan that meets the requirements of the grants. So basically, the site plan that we put out, there was just something to spur conversation. You'd be starting, you wouldn't be starting with that. You'd be starting with developing a process, taking public input, and then based on that public input, you develop a plan for what it is. It could be that you just have hiking out there. Maybe you don't have anything. I don't know what it, but you'd have to meet those criteria that the Minnesota Greater Parks and Trails and the people that you're going to ask for grants from, you're going to have to meet their parameters as well as meet the parameters that are established by your community, which could include, you know, the town board or other people that are in that area.
Larry, did you read, did you read the RFP?
I did. I mean, there's there's line items there that they requested to come up with a price for that RFP.
That's right. The the RFP.
And you can change that, and you can and you can scale this way now. If you want to say just recreational restoration or whatever you want to say about it, you're not going to have to go through that whole process and have all these total meetings in back and forth to go up with a price. I mean, why would you ask, why would you ask for an RFP if for a price for an RFP if it's that simple?
I think I think the issue is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, is in order for us to get the grants to purchase it, we would have, we have to go through this process because we need a master plan.
Mm-hmm.
You you have to go through the process of taking public input. You have to have meetings, you have to demonstrate to Minnesota Greater Parks and Trails Commission that you've went through that process, you've taken a testimony, you present all that to them. That's part of the part of the master plan.
So if it was just hiking.
Mm-hmm.
That certainly could not should not cost very much for a plan for just hiking, right? I mean, that should be pretty minimum, I would think. I could draw you up a plan for.
So so you bring up a good point. So if if you have a develop, let's let's say you hypothetically go through this process and you say you you want to have hiking, maybe some biking, different things that are really minimal impact, but you're probably going to need some parking lots. You may maybe want a road going through. I'm not sure what it is. That's what would be drawn out through the RFP process or through the planning process. So once you do that, as part of that planning process, you're going to identify what it what you want the park to be, what are going to be the development costs to do that, what are going to be your ongoing maintenance costs, and what exposed to try to impact, try to figure out or also to show what kind of needs that you're meeting in the region with this park, and that's what's presented. So the more needs that you're able to meet with this process by creating this park, the I would imagine higher the scoring that you'd have and your hope for getting funding. So once you purchase it, well, now you have all the you have what you need to go back to the state and say, we want you to help fund this development. Because let's say, for example, you 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 purchase the property, they grant you the money for that and and to develop it into whatever it may be, you decide, well, you've identified that it's going to cost you three or $5 million or $10 million, whatever that number may be, and you can phase it in over time. But you've identified that, and you can go back to them with this for another grant to pay for the development. That's what you do. It wouldn't be the Becker County themselves. It would be going out and spending this money to develop it like that. You'd be going back to the state and saying, okay, you gave us some money to develop this as a regional park. Now we want you, because you helped pay for this, we want you to also help pay for the development of it. And that's what they do. But it's it's a it's very much it's a detailed plan with a timeline to it that will identify. For example, let's say if you decide to restore part of it, you're not going to do that overnight. It's not going to be done in one, one year, two years. It might take you five years. But as part of the plan, if your plan is to restore it back to its original condition, you'd go out and research if there's other grants and identify them and and put those in the plan that your plan is to go and ask for funding through, let's say, the the U.S. Fish and or U.S. Forestry Department, I don't know, someplace where there's grants to restore it. That would be part of your plan, and you'd put in there what your timelines that would be to do it. It's a very detailed process.
Well, if I understand right, the township doesn't support much of anything with it as far as.
Sure.
And so that that so that would have, for me, that would have to be the plan, is what the township and the local businesses support and the local people who are most affected by it. So I I would, so I don't know. It sounds to me like, yeah, I don't even know. I wonder, I'd like to, I'm concerned, my, I guess I want to know what they think now because things have changed a little bit. And so I'm wondering what some of these people think that guy.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I don't I don't know if if we want to hear some testimony or not, but I I want to thank the, I mean, this was, this has been an opportunity for us to to consider, and it's been a great opportunity. I want to thank the owners and the Trust for Public Lands to bring this opportunity to us. I think some things have changed in the last couple of years. I think our revenue stream has been greatly impacted by by the Hennepin lawsuit, so we don't necessarily get those incomes. I think our forestry timber cutting, I I hope continues the same, but there's some questions on those. So our and then you can see our bottom line is right in in the packet after this. It's very, it it straps us very much if we want to. And there are some, there are some things moving forward that we see that are probably better opportunities for a simpler for something much simpler. Either Frazee Swim Beach is an opportunity that that's a that's established that that might need that the city's looking at selling it. I don't know if they've closed on it, but that's something that I think this board would be very prudent to protect that swim beach.
Yeah, I agree.
I I don't think, in my opinion, I can listen to testimony, but the concern is for for a primitive land for hiking, the only thing that this has asset that other lands that we don't is that high that high point. And I'd love to have that in a county park, but at this time, I just financially, I don't think that we're capable of moving forward with this commitment. That's my, that's my opinion. I wish we had more money, wish we had, and giving the opportunity, because I think it could be something special. But when you take that Lake Shore away, I that the attractiveness of to me has has much less. I don't see a a great asset if we take the Lake Shore away from it, and there are concerns with having the Lake Shore. So I'm I am I'm at a point, and again, I thank the family for for presenting this and offering this to us, but it's it's an opportunity that I have to, I have to say that isn't what we can accomplish right now. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I was I was just going to say a thing for me. I've I've attended many meetings, and I've I'm almost becoming a a regular on the the town board meeting. But but I I really listened and I appreciate have appreciated all the input. I do think that this could be an asset to to Becker County, but I just, I think for me, I would like to see that need established first and make sure that this is something that we need and not necessarily something that we want, because I think there's lots of things we could want. But I just don't know that we can, we can really show this that we need to spend this much money to to get it. And I'm I'm with Commissioner Nelson that I'm a little nervous with with where our budget is with the the rec account now, that I just don't know that this is something that I can support at this time, just given where I I don't want us to be in a position where now we have to use levied dollars to, whether it's to purchase it or whether it's to finish the project. So I just I just want us to be very careful about them.
I I do, I'm also very concerned about the cost. I'm also the one other concern I have is we do this, we do this study, the study shows that we need this, but we're going to have this, we're going to have, we're going to preserve it. I'm very concerned that we're not going to be considered a destination place or park, and we're not going to get the other grants. So now, 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 the now we've committed, let's say we've committed to doing it, now we have to pay for it. That's that's a big deal, big concern to me. But I also want to thank Bloshmans and for bringing this to our attention and the land trust, because this is, it's, I mean, I I'd never been there before. And when we took our to our road tour, we went up on top of that, and it was like, wow, this is pretty cool. So it's it's an awesome, awesome place, and it's an interesting and unique place. I just with our budgetary items that we have now and our our financing, it's a big concern for me.
And I think we we can likely get the grants, likely get the grants, right? Like, and I I know, you know, we talked with Larry Hansen at the meeting, and he he's confident that we can get the the grants to to bring it back to its natural state. But I don't know that those grants would include purchasing it. And I don't know that doing that would, you know, if we're looking at a restoration and just hiking, I don't know that that would be enough to bring us to the regional park high enough on the regional park score for us to get those grants. So I just, I think we need to take several steps back and. So I just, I think we need to take several steps back and decline, I think, as I told you, Steve, I, I would like for us to establish the need, what is the need, need for, for Becker County as far as restoration?
Mr. Chair, you did offer opportunities for those to speak, so that run open forum, certainly if they want to try to hit our, or change our opinion or...
Yes. David, please come up and...
I was also at the, the last township meeting, wanted to share with you guys another thing, maybe a new information item to bring up. You know, our goal, or, you know, we'd love to see this go into public, public domain or public ownership, and there were a few different paths forward for that. Between the time this was first presented until now, Trust for Public Land did, did approach us with an alternative approach, and that would be a DNR purchase of the land. The benefit to the taxpayer is, there's something called a PILT, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but DNR actually pays property tax back to the county, so you don't lose your, your tax base. I, I don't think necessarily county would have to do a master plan for DNR to purchase the land, but what you kind of lose in that is just control and what you want for future land use out there, because, because they would do this more natural, like a wildlife refuge. So if someone wanted to take a mountain bike through it, you know, you might be restricted. If Project 412 wanted to put a troll up there, you know, you probably wouldn't be allowed to do that, so there's less flexibility and, you know, do you trust that DNR would rather have county and county commissioners be the stewards of the land or, or DNR? So it's just an alternative approach to public ownership, you know, just consider to. I don't think I have anything else to add.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, Larry.
Larry Hanson, my address is 22852 or 55th Avenue of Osage, and one of the things that you guys have not seen, I think a lot of people up here have not actually seen the mountain as it really was and how beautiful it was, and I also think that a lot of people believe that the mountain was just a hill and that it wasn't a series of wetlands and ridges and whatnot. And right now, when you look at the mountain, you see the scars, that's what you're looking at. And while I'm totally against the original plan that was put forth, and I think everybody here is, and at the last township meeting and the first township meeting that I, I attended, we had a vote, show of hands of who would be in support of a simple parking lot east-west and a trail, a walking trail that would eventually get you to the top, and as you've seen, is a beautiful place to see. And the trouble is, is the mountain itself is ugly, and that's where this restoration stuff, and I hope you guys get together here and look at these pictures. I went back through some of my old photographs and found some of the pictures that I had taken.
Here, you flip it and then...
Of the mountain, and right now, things have been changed so much on, on one side of the mountain that where the water actually never ever came off of the mountain and down onto my property. By the way, my family homesteaded there and we still own that property. But that one side of the mountain, southeast side of the mountain, all that water comes right down off the mountain, minute a squirrel takes a leak up there, it's going to run down on my property. And that never happened before, that always wound up in wetlands. If you look at the middle picture in the back of the destruction, so you'll actually see what has happened with the destruction of the mountains, the ridges that were removed and the wetlands that were filled, the middle picture where, where I'm standing by some trees, there's a wetland underneath there about 20 feet under the, under that soil. So that's what I'm talking about. I would be totally against that original project. Who wants to have a RV park adjacent to their, their land? And at the same time, when I walk off of my property towards the mountain, there's a cliff there that's 20 feet tall. That's the place where I first hunted deer, and that ridge connects it back up to the mountain, and then there was a wetland below that. And so when I talk about restoration, whatever was pushed downhill could be pushed back up the hill. It's been 50 years since there's, that project was done, and there hasn't been anything growing on there except, you know, reed canary, or excuse me, smooth brom and, and spotted napweed and thistles and tansy and all these things that you don't want. It should be trees. And I think that it could be easily accomplished, especially since we have a Frazee FFA that has their own forest, have one of the biggest school forests in the state, and they, they do plant trees, that's even kind of one of their moneymakers. And between them and the DNR and whoever else, that could be easily reforested and instead of 50 years from now, still looking at the dang scars that are on the mountain, there could be something else there, there could be trees growing. You guys are going to miss a heck of an opportunity here if you don't move forward with this. I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of, of like I say, the, the process that we're going through to have to get to the grants, but there, there are ways to tweak that a little bit. That bay that's involved there on the shoreline is called Regan's Bay, and that, that bay could be excluded from that shoreline, that Schlossmans could then sell the rest of that and protect that bay, and that, that's a, an aquatic area that would score high on any kind of a grant system. And so I would, you know, if that's a part of what's necessary to increase the score, then just go ahead and add that to it. But I guess I would encourage you not to miss this opportunity. You missed the opportunity 50 years ago when you let the Tomo Corporation destroy the mountain and gave them the variance, the zoning variance in order to do that. Don't miss this opportunity to get it back. And I, like I mentioned at, at the township meeting, there's a similar site in Bozeman, Montana, and they call it the M. And, you know, I could see the schools bringing their, their kids out there and cross-country kids and, and like they do at Wannigan Park, Wannigan Park is one of the cross-country areas that they have. And, you know, drop the kids off at the one parking lot on one side and, and bus go around and pick them up on the other side, and they get that opportunity to run, run the trail, whatever it comes down to, and, and wind up seeing the top of the mountain. The view from there is, is awesome, and like I say, the, what the mountain itself isn't. And if you guys could, I, I guess that's what I'm asking you is not to, not to just consider the cost right now, because I think there's a way to find those, those monies to, to especially restore it. And I've talked to someone in the ecology department at the University of Minnesota and someone on, on a watershed district who is their water quality coordinator, and all, basically all their projects are done with grant monies from either the gambling monies or from the, the tax that we pay every time we buy, pay sales tax. And those pockets, those buckets of money are sitting out there, and if you want them spent on other places in Minnesota, that's, that's one thing, but it'd be nice to be a, see them spent here, and especially restoring something that's that beautiful, so.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. The only, the only caveat with that point is the, the legacy funds are going to be voted on again, so we don't know for sure that those funds are going to be available. I anticipate they will, but there's no guarantees on that one.
Yes, please come up.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Zick and I live on the west shore of Big Toad Lake. I've lived there since 1975. I've watched everything that has happened on the mountain, from Minniki Johnson to the horse ranch to everything, I've watched it all. And I'm sorry, but I, you're okay, Steve, but your plan to me is way past...
Just a reminder, it's not Steve's plan.
It's not Steve's plan.
Steve, Steve is doing the work that we've asked him to do.
We directed Steve to do the work, yes.
So don't, nobody blames Steve for anything that you think...
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, no, that's what I mean. But I'm, what I'm saying is there's too many what-ifs and unknowns in the costs going forward, and that's really hard unless the county's got a hell of a lot of money.
Thank you, Roxanne. Is there anybody else?
Well, I do have something new. I'm going to ask you guys, Erica?
Clark Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clark Lee, I live on the east side of Big Toad Lake, and I've been going up the mountain since 1962. I'm old and that's a long time, okay? I don't think I could climb to the top of it today. But I'm going to ask you to, don't table this, please don't table this today. You have a quorum, vote on it and kill it, okay? Now, Commissioner Werberg, you made a statement, Commissioner Jepson, you made a statement, Commissioner Nelson, you made a statement, and that was, and again, I'm not quoting it exactly, but if the township doesn't support it, you couldn't support it. Clearly, we had two township meetings where the, and public meetings on top of that, where the citizens did not support this and the township took a vote to not support it, but now all of a sudden we go to Plan B. It's like a school board referendum almost, well, let's go to something else now, because if we can't get that, well, then let's get something else. Commissioner Nelson, you brought up a very important point, okay? I don't care if you're a Republican or Democrat, but in 50-some days, we are going to have a new president and a new vice president, whether it's a Republican set or a Democrat set, and there may not be any grant money, and we can't afford to put ourselves as a county on the hook for this type of money. And the DNR, I would welcome that, okay? I sit and look at the mountain every evening, okay? And I would welcome the DNR to buy that mountain from Schlossmans. Now, they're going to pay them two and a half million dollars for it, because they're not idiots, okay? But they are going to, they would buy the mountain and then Schlossmans could sell off the lake shore some, but that would go instantly on Big Toad Lake. And so I would ask you as commissioners to take a vote today and say, Schlossmans, the county does not want your property, period. Thank you.
Just to clarification, the, the grant monies that we would, I mean, we wouldn't be on the, we would not be on the hook for the purchase, because that would be contingent on hitting the...
On the grants, yes.
So we're not, even if we went forward with the study, we would not be bound by that if the grants don't come through, we don't pay, pay any...
Correct.
But we're not guaranteed the grants to...
But we're not guaranteed, but we do have a front money.
Complete what our project is.
We would have a front money that has to be spent, and we would have this float money, and if you talk to the Frazee people, the float didn't end in a year, okay? That float could go on for years and years and years of two, $300,000 per year on the float while everything's getting put together, because things don't happen. If you build a house, if you build a business, do whatever you do, they don't happen the way they're supposed to. So I ask you, please don't table this, take a vote and tell Schlossmans to keep their property, Becker County is not interested in it. And, you know, Commissioner Nelson, you brought up a very interesting thing. Be careful what you ask for because it's zone commercial and I respect that, I understand that, and there's been a lot of conversation about that. But the fact of the matter is, is that David Schlossman's father is probably one of the biggest developers and one of the most astute developers, next to Doug, of course, okay? And if that could be developed for something, they would have done it. Thank you.
I don't think you can put words in their mouths, so I appreciate if you don't reference them. I think it was an, his probably, his passion that he probably, the family wants this to be public, because they do value that, just like everyone else does, so don't, don't... I mean, I don't know, just don't put words in their mouths and make them out to be the bad person, because they are, I think, trying to do the best thing for that property that they want.
I stand corrected.
Thank you, Clerk.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment? Yes, Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a bit unfortunate that the concept plan that was, the SRF chose to put out there antagonized so many people, because it was just an idea for discussion, but people latched onto it and thought, it's that or not. And said, Steve has done a great job trying to dispel that, said, no, 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 it's just a blank slate, that's one idea, could be others, so. And the other idea, first of all, the votes that have been taken have been largely focused at that map. That's what they're voting against. They're not voting against the idea of this being in public ownership and, and preserved and restored. That idea has passed the township board twice, not only the board, but the number of people that attended there, taking a straw poll, was almost unanimous, doing something public with it to preserve and restore and make it available for an alternative use. It would be most informative if we investigated the Parks and Trails grant scoring system. That scoring system is available, so if we went there and looked at what it is that actually would raise the score, tailor it to what that organization spends money on and targets it, we could see whether or not that proposal that's kind of coming forward as the alternative would rank high, and then whether the waterfront, taking it in or taking it out, would affect that score. So we improve the probability of getting the best possible grant. So it suggests that we do some investigation into their criteria and figure out how to tailor something to meet the state's needs as well as what meets the locals' needs. So if, if, if you can't do that, I would suggest submitting alternative proposals, one with just the mountainside, one with the mountainside and the, and the bagoon part, and then one with the full waterfront, and, and run that through the process, saying, how does that work out? So we're actually doing kind of an intelligent way of applying for grants, so we maximize our, our probabilities. The restoration grant would very likely be separate. I think Larry and I have each investigated independently that if you have the land, it could be put into recreational use almost immediately for low-impact, high-value kinds of uses. The restoration would be a longer term, and there are two sources of funds that I've, I've looked into, and it would not be cheap to do a good full restoration, but I think it would be well worthwhile, and, and that could be, the, the people who manage those funds could be convinced of the value of doing the restoration. Most people see the uniqueness of that mountain because it's a high peak, and that is in fact a very significant part of it. But what is hard to assess for the general public is how valuable the, the ecosystem is out there. It is rather unique, because it is highly varied. Karen tried to touch on that point, but it's, it's a kind of a nuance of ecology, that many of you know that Becker County sits in a unique place in the, on the planet. There's only one other place in Russia where ecosystems come that close together, and the ecosystems of the prairie and the central hardwoods forest and the boreal forest. And here and when a 25-mile stretch, you can go from one to the other to the next. And, and, and if there was appreciation of that, if people came out there and stood in the mountain, you could look one direction and see one and look the other and see the other. So it's, it's an appreciation of that. When you have those two ecosystems, three ecosystems together, you have a greater diversity of plants and animals in that zone than anywhere other than in another continent. So if you don't, if you're not taught that with interpretive signs, when you go out there and do wildlife watching and do plant identification, you would not know that all of that is available in one little parcel of land. So this is an opportunity to put that into public ownership, and I mean, if you put condos on top of a high biodiversity area, you're going to lose it. So do you preserve it for what it's valued for, because it is so unique? And, and the restoration is not exclusive of the other operation, you know, the, the basic project could go ahead with or without the restoration, so you don't want to get hung up on the idea, well, how much is it going to cost and is that going to be a burden? That's a, that's a separate operation. The last thing is the public participation process. There's a great deal of distrust, and as you know this, and a good way to, to offset that is to let people watch the sausage being made. They don't want to just have to be force-fed it when it comes out the other end of the machine. So it would really strongly suggest that the RFP actually be changed, because there's some public participation parts in the RFP that were kind of spelled out and they, they better... better propose to do exactly that. That instead, that they sit down with the folks out there in a big table with a big sheet of paper, and it's blank, and saying, okay, what do you think would work here and whatnot? And then they get to see that, so they know what's coming out the other end. It's not a surprise. And then I think you would have built greater support, and you folks would be involved in that as well. So you would see the process being made, it's not a black box. I would warn against turning the project over to the DNR for Wildlife Management Area. And let me tell you about my experience with that. Statewide, the DNR's wildlife managers had open rebellion against the commissioner, because the timber industry put a tremendous pressure on the DNR to produce a certain number of cords of logs off of state land. And DNR did not have enough state forest land available to meet that quota that they agreed to. So they, to make up that quota, they went into the wildlife management areas, which are off limits. And the DNR wildlife managers blew the whistle. And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service manages the Pittman-Robertson funds that pay for wildlife management areas, actually withheld millions of dollars from the state of Minnesota, because they were violating federal law. So, but did not stop DNR from logging off wildlife management areas. That's the last thing you would want to have add to the scar on the top of Toad Mountain, is to have a logging company come in there and log off the saleable timber. So be careful that if you think that's going to be the way to preserve it, is to give it to DNR, because they have a record of having over-extracted resources from the wildlife management areas. So thank you for listening. And I do hope that you take a little time, don't act hastily, consider what you're hearing here at the next meeting, and give yourself the opportunity, because you're not committed to anything more than the cost of preparing a master plan. That if you, out of your fund that you have available, fifty-six, I happen to agree that $50,000, $60,000 is more than what it would take to come up with this plan. Richard and I could probably do it in an afternoon.
I'd like to.
But anyway, that amount of money is a pittance, given what the opportunity would be. And so at least give yourself the opportunity to see the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Willis.
Thank you, Willis. I just want to add that I agree with everything you're saying in my wishes for what Toad Mountain could be. My concern is, is that we don't know that we're going to continue to have funds in our recreation fund, because of, as Commissioner Nelson had mentioned, the changes in tax forfeiture law with the Hennepin lawsuit, and I, and the forest, yep. And right now, we don't have the funds to have that carryover. So that, that's, I don't, and as I had previously mentioned, I don't want us to have to use county tax levy dollars to purchase it. So I agree with what you're saying. I just, we don't have, we don't have the money for it.
We're only going to allow people to-
The budget was up here, and what's unclear to the public is-
We've already heard from you, so, thank you. Thank you, Willis.
The fund available is not clear off the budget to the public.
Is Brian on this, Brian, you're on the screen. Are you intending to be on the screen?
Oh, sorry, I just got out of an MCT meeting, forgot to shut my camera off. Sorry.
Oh, I guess not. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to share? Jerry.
Commissioners, it's a long time past putting this proposal to bed. Just say no and mean it. The government owns enough property in Becker County. There are pristine city, county, state, and federal properties on lakes, woods, hills, prairies, which are seldom accessed. Why do we try to keep feeding this insatiable desire to own more land? If you foolishly buy this, there will be constant expenses. If somebody says, well, let's just restore it, well, there's going to be this, oh, this would be nice, and that would be nice, and it's going to be a, it's going to be a quicksand. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Is there anybody else? Yes, please.
I'm Lori Laney. I live on Highway 34 in Detroit Lakes. I guess I would just like to say there's too many red flags for me on this project, where we aren't considering the costs that come up later. There's spotted knappweed, there's maintenance, just too many red flags. I hope you vote no.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Yes.
I just stand here.
Yes.
Kind of a flip side.
We probably can't hear you, though.
Online, I can't.
They can't hear you online unless you come up to the microphone, sorry.
This kind of, I am kind of against the project. Am I afraid what could potentially become a Toad Mountain? Yes. So my only concern is, I hope you vote this down, but in going forward, the lakes are our most valuable resource. And I have, I'm the chair of our AIS for Toad Lake, and since 2003, out of our pockets, you know, I ask people for $50, $100, $200, we've spent over $200,000 combating curly leaf pond weed. Found out Monday, we have zebra mussels. So I hope more isn't always better, so whatever's developed, like RV parks or whatever, you got to take into consideration going forward, the stress on the lake and what you're doing to the lake. But I'm totally against this project, but going forward, whatever proposal comes from Toad Mountain, you take the lake into consideration as an asset, because once they're, they go the other way, you've lost your natural resources. Thank you.
Yeah, could you say?
Lori Mitchell. I'm her property owner on Toad Lake.
Thank you, Lori.
Mr. Chair, just a, just a point. The DNR does have a purchase, they have aquatic management areas, and hopefully that, you know, if the DNR is interested, the AMA would be an option for them to purchase this and protect lake shore. It's always a huge asset to every lake to have some natural shoreline on the lake and undeveloped. So if that's the case, if, that would be, that would be ideal opportunity. And they do look for partners on that also, and lake associations on Big Cormant and Bad Medicine have partnered with that. It'd be an excellent opportunity for a partnership with your lake association, if that's the avenue that this ends up going.
Douglas?
I'll keep it short. Douglas Sage, On Toad Lake, I have Bambi Resort. Tell me what it's going to cost, and probably not so much, you know? I think that this thing has dragged on long enough. I'd really like to see a motion today to just squash it. And there's all kinds of good ideas out there. There's also ways to do it without the county, without even government doing it. Raise the funds, buy it, and do what you want to do with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Larry?
Now, I do want to make exception with one thing that Clark Lee said. I'm not sure the DNR isn't, aren't idiots.
Larry Knudsen. I just want to bring out to the point that this property is not unique. It's a hump in the terrain is what it is. And that, and I'm serious. I don't mean to diminish it in any way. But if you look at the pictures, I took that from my pontoon, took a picture of the mountain, I took a picture of the north shore, and if you see where that arrow points, I've got 103 acres there. It's got almost the same elevation as the mountain. It's flat on top, though, instead of sitting in a point. It's got a running spring that runs out of the side of that, down into a creek that runs the whole distance of my property. Now, that's a unique piece of property. That mountain, again, is just a hump in the terrain, and the county has no business buying up any property. We have enough property. There's points to the east of this mountain that are just as high and higher. One on Little Elbow Lake, which is in the Smoky Hills, one on Wolf Lake, which is, I don't, what was the name of that? Pinnacle? Yeah, Lookout? And Smoky Hills. There's all kinds of points that are as high as this, or just about as high as this. So again, government shouldn't be involved in buying up tax property that can generate tax. We're not in that business.
Thanks, Larry. Is there anybody else that would like to have a comment, a chance to speak? What?
I think, for me, I think, I appreciated, appreciate everybody's input, but I think at this point, we do owe it to Schlossmann's.
Schlossmann's.
Sorry. To let them know, like, what our intentions are. And I do think at this time that we're going to have to pass on the mountain.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm with the motion to reject all service provider offers and bids, including SRF, who was the one recommended, and discontinue our pursuit of the purchase of Toad Mountain.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify.
Before we do, Carrie, do you see anything that we need to add, or Steve to add to that, or?
I don't.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify. Are you saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I do want to take this time again to thank the family for the offer and the, and Steve for his work, and Mitch. Again, I think sometimes you go unthanked, and this was not something Steve was pushing, it was what we directed him to. And he did a lot of extra work and hard work, and took a lot of criticism for it. So thank you for doing that. And thanks, all of you, for investing your time and letting us know the direction that we should go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I make a complimentary comment?
Yes, go ahead, Clerk.
We all appreciate the fact of how much time you and John isn't here today, but all of you have spent on this. You've taken a lot of calls. Erica thinks she is the supervisor. But I really appreciate that. I do, and I think I'm speaking for everybody here.
Thank you.
We appreciate the time that you've taken, because you haven't taken it lightly, just, oh, let's make a decision.
I do think that if there's any need of support for aquatic AMA on that property, I think that it would be an excellent opportunity for your township and lake associations to offer support for that as they move forward, so.
Absolutely.
All right, so, planning and zoning.
He's online.
Is he online? Okay. Kyle?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just have one item for you today, your consideration on holding a special meeting on October 8th, sometime in the AM, to hold an additional public hearing on the comp plan.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, thanks, David. Is he there? Or should we take, should we take a break until we can get that fixed? Oh, he's here.
Hello?
Mr. Chair, what, we're just going to get an update on where we're at?
We're just going to get an update on-
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, is it anything of significance that we're looking at today?
There's on, yeah. Is he?
I don't know.
It's showing I'm unmuted.
I'm trying to talk, we can't hear you. Oh, we can't hear him. We can't hear him.
I'm going to get a water if we have-
Yeah, let's take, let's take a, let's take a five-minute break.
Kyle.
And we'll get Kyle, run, roll in here, and then we'll come back.
Kyle, can you try to talk?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Yeah, I know. I can't quite hear you now. We can hear him upstairs.
Amanda, she can hear him too.
Yeah.
Here, go down the key.
Is he on his phone?
He's locked on, isn't he?
Can you hear me now?
Did you guys hear Brian talking?
No.
Yes.
Oh, I-
Yeah, I heard Brian. We didn't hear Brian either. Having his camera on.
We did not hear him either. Well, he's unmuted.
Did you, did you set up the phone number for this? You should be able to hear through the TV. Where's Kate, where's Kate's phone? I think that extension, I'd put him on speakerphone if we have to.
What is this, right there? Going to send him a chat, tell him to call on this number, and I'll see if I can get him up.
Yeah, we've heard about that. They said, oh, no, no, don't worry, don't worry, we got the money. I said, hey, you do, you got $800,000 or less. Oh, yeah, we always work it.
Should we have a phone number for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Give him a call. No.
$800,000. We're not like $8,000.
Where's that?
The township.
That's right.
I think Carrie went to go get his phone to see if we could at least try a couple things. I'm assuming he's on his phone. I don't really know.
And he goes, he goes, just got this morning, got an email that working 3%.
For some reason, we have a technical difficulty.
We got $900,000, we could drop it by four, five percent.
No.
And I'm like, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
That's $90,000, not $90,000.
Three, nine, three percent, yeah.
Oh, go ahead and talk, Kyle. Oh, you're on the phone, sorry. Okay.
You have to make a resolution.
Yeah, in October, mid-October.
Yeah. That is something we should, yeah. Carrie, at the annual township meeting, we should have a Canada tourism meeting, ready for all townships to-
Yeah, I was thinking about that annual meeting that's coming up here.
Yeah.
Bringing that up, yep.
That's October.
I think that needs to be passed within a year, doesn't it? Yes.
Well, he's got to plug back in.
Yeah, it is. And then-
I mean, at least that's how they think this is.
Yeah, they don't know for 100% sure. When is it? Isn't it October?
Usually, it's like the Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday? 7:10, I think. 6:30, right?
Seven.
Seven. Seven.
Oh. There's a subscription at six thirty.
Oh, yeah.
He's going to try to call in. Val's going to try to call in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kyle, you're not muted anymore, why don't you try to talk?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Should I change? I'm trying. I think it's better than this county. My daughter, my youngest daughter had a game of crazy. My daughter's parents' night was in Lake Park. My daughter, my wife is the coach of the, see, or the team. So my wife is coaching my youngest daughter.
All right, Val's probably, I'll just leave you on here so you can hear.
I just missed her. My daughter did that.
All right, thanks.
Well, she, my, she had aunts and uncles, and my mom was there, so it's like, she's just like.
All right, we can't get him on, but I'll just give the update. If that's good.
Okay, yeah. I missed that. Just one minute.
Oh.
I got it. Everyone here, I missed my daughter's senior night in volleyball because I was at my other daughter's, and I got back like two minutes too late. They started early because of, and then we had a volleyball game. My daughter actually got her thousand career assists in water. And my wife and I were late to that, so thank goodness it's controlled, we're out on the way to water. And if we miss this, we are going to be thrown out. It's quite funny.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Yes, also, I'll give a quick update. We're having technical difficulties. For some reason, we can't unmute our participants on our teams. So in speaking with Bolton and Mink, as well as Commissioner Jepson, and we've had some ongoing meetings, so moving forward, they've modified some things, and the request by Kyle is to advertise for a public hearing, a special meeting on October 8th, for this board to take public, it would be a public hearing, public input with regard, on the comp plan. And then the following week on a regularly scheduled board meeting, that would be the time to look at taking action on the actual comp plan. And then in between, they would be, as they'd advertise, they would do the social media blitz, as well as advertising in the paper, on our website, et cetera, for the public hearing to give. We haven't set, but I was thinking at the same time as we normally would hold our board meeting, at eight fifteen.
Would it be better?
Oh, okay.
I only say that just because too many people work.
I think we're open to whatever time we want to advertise at, but I.
If it's okay with you guys, in the evening, I think would be better for people to participate.
People to be able to, that work, et cetera.
But.
Maybe we could do it at six. We can leave at seven. What day is that, on a Tuesday?
It is. It's on our off week.
But it doesn't, it's up to the.
We could do it at, like, the very end of the, five-thirty-ish, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we did it at five-thirty? Oh.
I mean, we can do it during the day.
I mean, I'm just, after five o'clock, I won't do that.
And I think, then I think we should do it during the day.
Yeah.
Just go with the original.
And we can take written correspondence.
Yes, yes. And they would take all of that into consideration, and then modify, do some edits on the actual plan, and then it would come back the following week for board review and action.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will notice for that time and place of that hearing, then at eight fifteen.
Well, we can push back, I mean, it's the only item on the agenda. Well, I think, I think if we're going to do it in the morning, we should do it, or if we're going to do it during the day, we should do it right away in the morning. Right, but I'm just saying eight thirty, not eight thirty.
Oh, not at eight fifteen, okay.
Well, I'm just. Eight thirty. Let's do eight thirty.
We'll do eight thirty. Got it.
Do you want a motion for that?
I would like a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to do the public hearing for the comp plan on October 8th at eight thirty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Discussion?
Yes. Just checking, eight thirty on the eighth. Has to be public, publicized at the?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the date, sorry?
Yes.
I just asked if we need to publicize.
Yes, we'll make sure that we're, we meet the criteria for the publication.
And then you, so you're in a social media.
Yeah, they're also, in addition to the requirements going to do, you know, out on social media, obviously, our website, the paper. And then you'll make note of that, right? Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That's it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Carried.
Thank you.
Yep. We have any, anything else, any further business? All right, we are adjourned.
Well, I guess I.